You're known more intelligent or less intelligent. What we have right now is timing. An opportunity for prosperity for the entire town. So, I, I just would like you all to consider that, that this opportunity probably will not come back around. And the timing is here in front of us to make this entire community much, much more prosperous. And thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else in the public that'd like to speak? Sir?
Yes.
State your name and...
My name is Steve Giordano, and I'm from the United Food and Commercial Workers Union. I am here on behalf of the workers and my union, not only the group or any elected official. UFCW is the official labor union that represents cannabis workers who see to sales of medical and adult use, and we're a national labor union of 1.3 million hardworking families. We currently represent medical facilities here in New Jersey. We oppose the ordinance to opt out, and we do support the ordinance to opt in. I saw them on the agenda when I got here. These jobs are going to be unionized jobs here in New Jersey. The way the law is written, we had the strongest labor laws in the country. Connecticut and Virginia just took our labor laws, actually. So, these jobs would create union jobs, living wages, healthcare, sick time, vacation time, and a voice on the job. These are careers. These aren't just part-time 7-Eleven jobs. These workers also at these facilities currently, right now as we speak, operating, have degrees in botany, horticulture, chemistry. We even have pharmacists that work in the retail side of it. So, these are not low-income jobs. These are high-middle-class jobs, high-end middle-class jobs, that attract young people, specifically in Stockton, who we are working with at this point for an apprenticeship program. So, this keeps local communities here helping strong for the middle class. Two things I would suggest. The city of Bayonne passed an ordinance about two and a half months ago. Yes, it's a big, big city, but it, it's a conservative ordinance. It only allows three facilities in the whole city. It lays out application fees, renewal fees, but the main thing about it, it has a merit-based application system, which means that it's not up to council or the mayor. It's up to the company to show good faith to the community. Things such as environmental standards. If they polluted in Colorado, they're going to pollute here. If they fault workers' rights, since it's labor standards, if they fault labor standards in Illinois, then they're going to fight workers' rights here. The workers here deserve a voice on the job. And the city of Bayonne ordinance is probably the best model-based ordinance, and that's what I would suggest as far as when you allow people to come in and how you're going to allow them to come in. On top of that, if you want a tour of a facility that's up and operating, a vertically up facility, I can give that to you as well, so you can see it for yourself. At the end of the day, you know, passing ordinance, opting out, it's an attack on working people. There's no other way to say it's an attack on working people. It's an attack on jobs, and it's an attack on the middle class. So, we would ask that on behalf of the UFCW, a part of the AFL-CIO, and also the New Jersey Building Trade, where we'll be building up these facilities, IBW, carpenters, steam fitters, we'd ask you to vote, to, to vote no on the opt-out and vote yes on the opt-in. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Sir?
Well, in general, I'd be interested in hearing fact-based.
Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Steve Enders. I'm a local resident. I'd be interested in hearing fact-based objections to this operation as opposed to the fallacies of brown water or rudimentary smells or this and that, or substance I'd be looking for as a general taxpayer in this town.
Anything else? Anyone else in the public? Make a motion to close the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got the end of the case report?
Okay, good evening. I have some good news regarding the reconstruction of Fifth Avenue. Received word from Pinesland that they stepped to our stormwater review. One last remaining item to issue public notice, and we're good to go. So, we're going to process that notice, send it up to DOT, and probably within August we'll be off the bid, and I would estimate the first meeting in September, we can make an award for that. Resurfacing the Maple.
How much did you say? This could be finalized, you got a bid?
I, I would say we'll have to bid in August, and hopefully at the council meeting in September, make the award and have this as a late fall project for this, for this year.
So, the Pinesland has finally given us the green light?
Yes.
To move forward?
With our stormwater review, yep. Long time coming. Maple, just finishing up the design, probably going to have that submitted to DOT either this Friday or Monday, and likewise, look to have that bid in August, and hopefully at the meeting in September, go out to have the award. I'll probably have those bid on the same day, and you know, hopefully we'll get the same contract. We have two projects going on in the city, and hopefully bringing the costs down, and it's not guaranteed the same contractor will get it, but we have two projects going on usually, same individual company gets it, so we're moving forward with that. And then lastly, the DOT 2022 grant applications. I know there's been some discussion regarding two roads, South Jersey Avenue and Thirteenth. Had opportunity to look at both of those roads and did speak with the DOT, and although they're on opposite ends of the city, they're their new application this year, you can apply to both of those. And based upon the cost estimate, you're roughly going to be within $260,000 to $270,000 for both projects, and that's generally right in the, the grant funding that DOT typically issues to each municipality. So, just would need a motion, and council will proceed with that. The South Jersey would be from the township line with Waymouth, with that portion of Ninth to the dead end, pick back up on Cumberland, take that down to Fourth, and then with Thirteenth from Route 50 to Walker's Forge Road.
By the way, in the minutes, we did discuss Thirteenth.
Okay.
The primary road, the street control, but that's a small road, but that's disintegrating.
So, the DOT, they updated their form for this year, and you're allowed to do multiple roads. In the past, it had to be one road or the road was contiguous, but they've updated their form, so if the city wishes, you can go for both roads for the 2022 application.
When we make the application, Mike, can we put the one as the primary road that we need to get done, and then the other one will be a secondary, or would it be a joint?
It would be a, you would have, basically what they've done now is they have a primary one and primary two, and you're allowed up to three roads as your primary one that you can submit for. So, you're going to request a certain funding that we come up with based upon current cost of construction. Depending on how the DOT dides out their funding, you may get to pull them out and make it a little less, but you know, at that time, once you have that grant, you have the ability to go, you know, for both roads, make one an alternate, try to do them on one shot, maybe you focus on the South Jersey Avenue and Cumberland to the dead end and go with Thirteenth. So, right now, it's just you're encompassing those roads that you have permission to do the improvements on, you know, once DOT gives you the funding.
You need that, you need that in motion to surprise?
Yes, that in motion also, there is a typical resolution, if I spoke to Judd about, within 30 days of the, of the application, a resolution of support needs to be submitted by council. It's a typical stock resolution with copy of, and I can provide that to Judd, what he did for, for Maple last year. So, I would just need a, a resolution of approval and a motion to proceed with those two roads.
We'll make the necessary motion to proceed with the application to be forwarded of 50 Streets, beating Thirteenth Avenue and South Jersey Avenue. Is there a second? Nine in front of it, and it's going to... Right face out? South Jersey Avenue. Gets from her house to that?
Yeah, the township line lead is at Ninth, so we'll be going from the intersection of Ninth to the dead end, because that, that portion there is Waymouth Township.
Her driveway will not be done. As the road bends, that becomes her driveway, so it's going to stop right there where the bend is. Will it get her from the front of her house to Ninth Avenue? She comes in off of 10th, she had Ninth Avenue block. Is that a yes or no? I'm not sure what your question is. Will it get her from her house to Ninth Avenue? If she goes down South, South Jersey Avenue, yes. Without interruption, she can come out of driveway, turn on the pavement all the way to Ninth Avenue? Is that her?
Her, her house is right there on the intersection of Ninth Avenue. She would go past Ninth, she would then be heading towards 10th. So, we would be doing our city portion, not Waymouth Township's portion.
Ninth doesn't extend, so...
It's a, it's a paper street, so that road extends along the railroad tracks.
I understand that. A lot of hate's been made in the past about how Mary Faith was treated poorly by city council in the way that we handled the closing the intersect, the railroad crossing, so that she has nothing but a puddle ridden dirt road to get away from her house. And first responders have even given a lot of testimony that they haven't taken into the time getting to it if a bad thing happened. If we're going to take the time to pay anywhere near her house, given how much sympathy was put out by council over so long a period of time about how she got the raw end of the deal, we should make something special to accommodate. I'm surprised that you're not, given how much voice you've put to this in the past, I'm shocked that you're not...
What, what am I supposed to do?
You're supposed to make sure that she has it somehow thrown.
She's having...
That she's restored, that her...
She's having...
E-brass is restored, that her safety is restored.
Mr. Dilch, if you ride down that street, you will see it is a very bumpy dirt road that she has, and that is now going to be asphalted. It's 500 feet. I can't do anything more, I can't do anything less.
I, I think it's a little confusing from the area.
Now, you get to her house on 10th, right? You go down 10th to South Jersey, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, look, there's nothing more that I can do. Of course you have safety to get, I mean, if the engineers matter, don't drive, believe, there's no question about it, it's going to be safe. Who could not be safer than you? It's not common.
Okay, then I mean, the paving limits would be denied towards the dead end or the house in the drive-by parks to make that curve. We would pave up to that curve, and we would put an eight gron on, because once you can't do the improvements on that outside of private property. We would pave in dirt portion during the, the city right way, we would put a typical driveway eight gron on, you know, it does the limits to the, to take that.
She gets a little help if she doesn't give her... So, there was a motion, there was a second, we're going to go vote, call to go further discussion on...
Mr. Dilch?
Epstein, I'm not familiar enough with any good old guy myself.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
I'm going to go Epstein also.
Ms. Basker?
Yes.
Mayor Perdusso?
Yes.
Thanks, Mike. Anything else you have?
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You have the bill list? Randy, do we have one bill here? I didn't get a chance to take a look. Make a motion to approve the bill list?
Yep.
There's a motion, there's a second discussion. Randy, we have $6,200 for the mob container. I didn't get a chance to take a look at the invoice. What is that for?
I believe a lot of that is for cannabis meetings, research reports, and also the...
The $3,000 to replace the carpet of copier was not our last most belt mess, or the muck up for that?
Yeah, what happened there is that, coincidence, we had a water leak over the copier, probably two weeks after we had it. Yeah, pretty much wrecked it.
So, the brandy copier got wrecked?
Brandy copier got wrecked. So, I got a new copier in here because I needed a copier, and then I'm, I'm going to go to JIF and get insurance for it. Downside of that is that we have to pay a $1,000 deductible.
So, you're going to go put through the insurance?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So, we're going to replace the pipes now?
Well, we're getting quotes on it.
Here's my thought, like, we have to keep upkeep on these buildings.
Yep.
And the facilities, otherwise things like this happen. We have to keep things constantly improving. It's, it's just like anyone's house, you constantly have to work at it.
But sometimes you don't know until you... But we do know, because the public works for him until four months ago, the last time he got a leak, and it took out the heater, he told us, so he had been all week and all kinds of white, and it needed to be replaced, and nothing had been done about it. Nothing.
Nothing was ever said that we had pinhole leaks everywhere.
Written reports here from the public...
If we had pinhole leaks, then the building would be...
Written report.
So, we will be proceeding to get quotes. I think there's already been three, to probably get a couple more, which will figure out the public's opinion.
Is there any more discussion?
I have another question. Judd, what's this one here for staples? A chair, the file cabinet, and supplies?
Yeah, the chair, I ordered a chair for myself and also for the conference table because some of them were just bad. But the file cabinet is the main thing, that's the main cost, was over $415 primarily for the tax office, and then there was just some general supplies, some pens and all that.
Anyone have any other questions about the other? Make a motion, a second vote call?
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Ms. Basker?
Yes.
Mayor Perdusso?
Yes.
We have the minutes of April 28th, May the 5th, and June 2nd. The executive session of May the 5th, did we ever have them approved by the labor council? Because we held them, because there was some language there without approval.
I did not talk today.
Okay, so, we're going to have to hold off on that one then, too. We got that signed on time, yeah.
Okay.
Labor term. The other ones I'm okay with. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 28th, and May the 5th, and the June 2nd meeting, and excluding the executive session because we did not have any input that we are aware of from our labor council. Is there a second?
I have a question. Is there a reason why...
There could be a second, third, I'll step in.
I'm sorry, thank you. Is there a reason why you didn't request a, to do that?
Do what?
To make sure that the labor council had minutes to review.
I thought that was maybe in our report. I picked up my packet last night, and that's when I discovered it wasn't in there. So, there's a motion, there's a second. All in favor? Aye. Any votes? Next we have a presentation from Mr. Henry.
Joe Henry, Hardware Insurance. Mr. Dilch, I will cut it down for you even more.
Thank you.
Every year, as a member of the JIF, you're required to have safety on the agenda. So, each year, as you know, if you've been here in the past, I have a topic presented. This year, it's seatbelts, how they save lives. The idea came to me based on this Jay Montgomery, who was a safety consultant for the JIF, put this out several months ago. This is a firefighter in Ohio. He was on his way to a barn fire. His vehicle flipped, rolled, he was ejected. He was 34 years old, and tragically, he was killed, and he was not wearing a seatbelt at the time. What I'm going to do now is bump over to page six, because the information previously we had covered about what the JIF is all about. So, in the beginning, this is the topic. In 1982, Representative David Hollister of Michigan introduced a bill. Civil liberty advocates rallied hard against that proposed bill. Fellow state legislators said that was a recallable offense. Mr. Hollister also had death threats presented to him. He received numerous pieces of hate. Now, also, what was the controversial bill he was proposing? Believe it or not, it was a seatbelt law. So, at that time, only 14% of Americans wore seatbelts, even though lap and shoulder belts were required on all vehicles beginning in 1968. Existence of those life-saving devices was the norm. One Michigan legislature said it was a lesson in mass hysteria created by corporate-controlled media. Drivers and passengers complained that seatbelts were uncomfortable and restrictive, but the real uproar over the mandatory seatbelt was ideological. So, New York was the first state to pass a mandatory seatbelt law in 1985, while New Jersey, the fine was $50. It was pretty hefty sum of money back then. Seatbelt compliance jumped to over 70% in New York as a result of that, so obviously they clicked it or ticked it while it was working. Michigan adopted a seatbelt law in 1985, almost four years after that bill was presented by Representative Hollister. On that Fourth of July weekend, 25 motorists died in car crashes alone in Michigan, none of them were wearing seatbelts at the time. As of August 2020, only New Hampshire is without a mandatory seatbelt law for adults. As a result, seatbelt use in New Hampshire is estimated at 70% versus over 90% nationally. Just a little sub, uh, sub-subject here, in 2019, 70% of all traffic deaths involve unbelted victims in New Hampshire. Apparently, there is an initiative to adopt a seatbelt law in New Hampshire. Next page, here's some items here, things you may or may not know about seatbelt laws. I just want to touch on one, and you can check the others as you go along. Even at a slow roll, it's not going to help you. Many people think that if they're going to the store, they're going around the corner, they don't need to bell in when you're driving slowly on city streets or a traffic rush out. It's known that crashing at 25 miles per hour, just like falling from a second-story window, and collision at 60 miles per hour has the impact of falling 12 stories from a building for unbelted victims. Just a couple of facts on the next page. We do target kids with driver safety in the high schools. Seatbelts save lives, as we've stated. It's estimated that 13,000 lives a year save simply by wearing a seatbelt. Traffic accidents sadly are the leading cause of death for U.S. teens, and it's estimated that 16s between the ages of 16 and 19 die daily by not wearing seatbelts. Next, I've got a few benefits of wearing seatbelts. They are the most effective way to prevent death and serious injury, period. They can help you control your vehicle when you're in a crash, they keep you in place during impact, and most importantly, they are designated to work with airbags. Moving on, here's a picture of a vehicle. You may have seen it, it was in every publication in the country and worldwide. This is Tiger Woods, a famous scalper vehicle. In March, he had an accident, rolled his vehicle. He was doing 87 miles per hour, and 45 mile per hours then, the police on the scene said had he not been belted in, he would not have survived the crash. So, once again, that's proof that seatbelts do save lives. Next, I have information here from an insurance underwriter that we work directly with. The first case was her own daughter, who had been told repeatedly to wear your seatbelt. She came home in icy conditions. She was late, her mother contacted her, the daughter contacted, contacted her back within a couple hours, said, "Mom, I've had an accident. The vehicle rolled, I'm fine. I did have my seatbelt on." Tragically, the second story was a couple of high school girls. The driver was belt, was not belted in, the passenger was belted in. They hit a patch of black ice on the way to school, struck a tree, and tragically, the driver was killed. The young girl that was seatbelted in walked away from the accident. So, I leave you with these few thoughts. Make it personal. Don't let your loved one or yourself become one of these statistics. First thing you do when you get in the vehicle, put your belt on. Check the person next to you, check the people in the car. Put them on. If they don't put them on, don't let them drive with you. Remember, because the person not belted in can become projectile and harm you and anybody else in the vehicle. Help spread the word because one person convinced had to be a lifesaver. Seatbelt laws, including back to what I include this year's, take your presentation. Any questions? If you have any entertainers, please?
Very well put. Next caller is on.
Thank you.
Can we get that loss ratio information?
I do have statistics that loss ratios are given from the JIF administrator, and that information goes...
So, we Oprah our commissioner, and we'll get it that way?
That information comes quarterly from the JIF directly to the fund commissioner.
Thank you. Very good presentation.
Senator Barry, to the point. I just want to say, as in the fire services I've been into, that the worst injuries that I've seen in motor vehicle accidents is are the ones that don't have the seatbelt, more of the head, head injuries, or man ejected out of the automobile. So, what you're saying is, is, you know, spot on. And the fire service is so strict about it now that any new fire trucks that are purchased, all firefighters are now required to have the belts on. If the belt is not on or not connected, the truck will not move. So, they see it because there have been some rollovers, some firefighters are, as a result...
It's the second leading cause of deaths for firefighters.
Right, right.
Tragically, someone would do happen as...
Unfortunately, yes, yes.
It's a good bullet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry.
You're welcome.
Moving down here, we have some correspondence. We have Mr. Jimmy Carmine, who wants to purchase a lot, so we have a copy of his letter. I did take the time to speak to Mr. Mancini. Jim, the lots that you're looking at from 26 to 29, I'm seeing here has an assessed value of $3,500. Then, you have lots 30 to 32, a total assessed value of $2,600. And then you have lots 33 to 36, which have a total assessed value of $3,500, which is a combined total of $9,600. I know that you have offered $400 a lot, quite honestly. I'm very, very surprised that these lots are assessed that high. I would have never thought that they would have been, they're so small, micro-sized.
Mr. Lafferty, I'd like to ask you a question. We sold some property to Mr. Gonzalez, and tell me, from my recollection, that we sold them for $100 a lot.
I can, I can look at that, but it really won't... I mean, I'm not an appraiser, so I can't tell you the difference in value of these lots.
All right, so I'm trying to understand, why need so much more money to get me sold some other lots? Does anybody else in the council remember?
Well, those appraisals were done by Mr. Mancini.
Can I ask a question? If, if the city has lots it's inclined to sell, is there not some protocol that you put them out for auction, you put them out, maybe there'd be a public notice, other people? You, you do it on a case-by-case basis? Somebody writes a letter?
He's been to the landowners, so therefore he can petition to the city.
Oh, okay.
For interested to sell.
Okay.
Then, you know...
Well, there's two ways. There's two ways to... Ms. Mancini's correct. There's two ways to sell city-owned property. You can do a private sale to an adjacent property owner.
Okay.
That's actually a more costly way to do it for the city, because it requires publication, and we went through that this time. The other way is the auction, and put it out for auction with reserve, where you can put the property up for auction, and if you don't like the bids, it comes in, and you just reach out and protest. So, there are two ways to do it.
Okay, but when it's a continuous landowner, that is appropriate, or just...
They can, they can make a request, yes. And then it's up to the city council, whether the city council deems the property to be of no...
What's the size of a lot?
Therefore, the desire is to put it out.
Okay.
That's the way I recommend that you do it, is put it out of the launch.
I think it's a commercial law. I think it's a commercial law.
Anyway, I don't have a map in front of me, although I did see a map, and it appears to me that there's only one person with this sort of benefit to, and that's Mr. Carmine. The thing that we would have to figure out is, what are we wanting to sell this for? Are we bound by law to have to sell it to what the assessed value is?
You, you have a certified assessor who will place the value on this property. If he comes back and says that he's reevaluated the position, that, that would be one of them. I mean, but it's kind of hard for the city council to accept values that are significantly less than the assessed value without discussing with the assessor.
So, are you suggesting that you should discuss it with the assessor first?
I, I think the first, the threshold question that you have to answer is, are you interested in selling? in selling a piece of city property? If you are, then you need, you're going to need to establish what you believe to be the minimum bid on the properties, and that will require discussion with the assessor.
So, Mr. Carmine indicated here, according to his letter, that he's willing to pay $400 a lot, which would be a total of $4,800, but Mr. Mancini says...